Allegiance, Sheriff.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the free and equal exercise of our right to vote.
Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Here.
Kentello Zelman here, Slattery. Slattery absent, Klinker.
Here.
Klinker here, Johnson. Johnson absent, Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here, Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here, Casadis.
Here.
Casadis here, Rita. Rita absent, Donahue. Donahue absent, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Farenwald.
Here.
Farenwald here, Hill.
Here.
Hill here, Mac.
Here.
Mac here, Carr.
Here.
Carr here, ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next is a presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of November the 26th, 2019. I have a motion by Alderman Farenwald, second by Alderman Mac. Any questions? Roll call.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Could I have Mr. Sean Sarge come to the podium? We're going to do this with a face.
Yeah.
Camera. Please come up this way. Chief, do you have... Can you just face it that way? Raise your right hand, please. And you're going to repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Sean Sarge.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office.
Of the office.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
For the city of Blue Island.
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do sound me swear.
Do sound me swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
On the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So am I.
So am I.
Congratulations. Well, congratulations. Welcome aboard. We've got this fellow firefighter there walking on the board. Let's give him a round of applause. Next, we move into public comment.
Good evening. My name is Carol DePaes Green. I have a bunch of concerns. One of them was, at the first City Council meeting in November, we certainly had the opportunity to see an ordinance be passed, that two aldermen had a copy of. The legislative council didn't have a copy of it. The city attorney didn't have a copy of it. Yet we had ten votes to pass this ordinance that everyone, with the exception of Fred Bellato and Kevin Donahue, had the privilege of putting eyes on before you voted for this. I don't know how elected officials vote for something that they haven't seen. You might want to think about that because it's important to review these documents before you vote on them. The other thing I want to take the time to do is thank you, Mayor Domingo Vargas, for setting up and making arrangements for committee meetings to be broadcast and videotaped because that's the only way that the citizenry is going to be able to get that information. Without that, we wouldn't have any information. At this time, I am going to talk about a forensic or procedural audit now. Blue Island taxpayers are exhausted by taxation, wasteful spending, multitude of excuses, lack of a counter offer to capture funds from quorum prior to the hospital board ruling, in addition to payments to numerous connected contracts, including payments to a firm with an open Attorney General complaint. We are still waiting for the Attorney General's office ruling. We see Blue Island aldermen taking orders, using their vote as their personal vote, ignoring and neglecting the wards, and simply not representing constituents in their respective We hear and see huge chunks of information omitted from multiple committee reports that are read into the Blue Island City Council record. Those records are very important, and it's important that they be accurate. So leaving out chunks of information, I'm not even certain that that's legal. A crackdown and an investigation that digs deep into Blue Island's municipal finances appears increasingly necessary. Borrowing from different funds has hit a $30 million and climbing all-time high. As millions have not been properly accounted for, as evidenced by electronic checks that are not recorded or reported to the Finance Committee, minimally resulting in Finance Committee reports being incomplete and Finance Committee reports that are inaccurate and erroneous. No one knows the current bottom line. The Finance Department does not know what is currently in the treasury. Dave Meyer, CPA with Warmer and Rogers, Finance Department doesn't know. Carmen Bellato, City Treasurer, Randy Hoiser, City Clerk, along with the Finance Committee, do not know what is in the coffers. So who is really minding the store? FOIA requests were submitted on November 15th and November 23rd for all funds going into and coming out of the Water Fund, including payments to the City's Chicago for water. Where are the funds from the Chicago Fire filming and any other filming? Where's the paper trail and accounting for the Meadows? Where's the paper trail and accounting for monies generated and collected at the Rec Center? The Finance Department, City Council Treasurer, Blue Island City Clerk, and Finance Committee should be independently generating their own reports and comparing the figures. Carmen Bellato has repeatedly reported he gets his report from the Finance Department. The failure to generate independent reports reflects that there are no checks and balances. Therefore, accounting errors, human errors, data entry errors are not easily captured and corrected in a timely manner. This is simple and easy to understand. Together, they've all put the city of Blue Island in jeopardy. At the last Finance Committee meeting, it was noted by Alderman Fred Bellato that net pay was greater than gross pay. That's why it's important to put human eyes on these documents and get this stuff straight. Carmen Bellato should have an adding machine in his office. There should be a money counting machine in the Clerk's office. The CPA and the Finance Department, Treasurer, Clerk and Finance Chair should know what's in the treasury to the quarter of a cent, moment to moment. There should be a schedule for when funds are turned in from the Blue Island Police Department, the Meadows, the Recreation Center, and anywhere else where money is generated that comes to the city of Blue Island. The time for a forensic or procedural audit is now, starting with the Blue Island Water Fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Let me start with this. I want to congratulate the parade committee, all your volunteers, all that hard work, the fundraising throughout the year. That parade was phenomenal. Phenomenal. I've gotten compliments, and I'm forwarding to all of you who participated, from the aldermen, the elected officials, the residents, all the volunteers from outside of Blue Island. They've heard about it, some have tended it, and they said they're in awe. Again, kudos to you, congratulations to all of you. And every year, not saying that the first one was X level, but it's getting better and better and longer and longer, and more people are getting about it. Again, I want to congratulate all of you, on behalf of the city, on behalf of my office, job, not just job, extremely well done to all of you. It is the holiday season, and I heard what Mrs. DePaes Green has mentioned. In fact, she has mentioned it before, and I think a couple of years ago, and I know Alderman Johnson has brought this up about the forensic audit, and I think we've been explained, Mr. Kasparic has mentioned that normally a forensic audit has to be dedicated to one particular item or account or line item, et cetera. And to be honest with you, I would favor it, to put this to rest once and for all, whether it's the Water Fund, whatever item or account or needs to be checked in, I would have no objection to it. And again, the question is, it would have to be probably higher CPA or auditors who are not right now working for the city outside, and we would have to probably get a couple estimates or see who's out there to do it. But again, as Mayor of the city of Blue Island, I would welcome it, to finally put this to rest, the situation regarding the money in the city of Blue Island. Additionally, you have mentioned about people not knowing how much money exists on the accounts. As Mayor, and I was going to make this comment before the Finance Committee, is I think the residents of Blue Island need to know how much money has been paid to the vendors, how much money is owed to any vendors. I know there's talk about instead of appropriations, a budget, and again, I would favor that, as long as, again, it would keep everybody in line and know exactly how much money can be spent by each department, and I see no problem with that. And that's, I'll leave it at that. City Clerk, any business?
No business.
Any bids?
No bids.
City Treasurer, City Treasurer's not here. I guess we'll move on to the approval of interim fund transfers from unrestricted...
We need the Treasurer's report as well, too.
Treasury report, do we have one?
Right, yes.
Again, I'll leave it for everybody to ruse. I'm not going to go into detail. That's the Treasurer's job to do. But I'll move on to number two. I guess we need a motion for approval of interim fund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Casadis. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you. Next, we move into public comment.
Good evening. My name is Carol DePaes Green. I have a bunch of concerns. One of them was, at the first City Council meeting in November, we certainly had the opportunity to see an ordinance be passed, that two aldermen had a copy of. The legislative council didn't have a copy of it. The city attorney didn't have a copy of it. Yet we had ten votes to pass this ordinance, that everyone, with the exception of Fred Bellato and Kevin Donahue, had the privilege of putting eyes on before you voted for this. I don't know how elected officials vote for something that they haven't seen. You might want to think about that because it's important to review these documents before you vote on them. The other thing I want to take the time to do is thank you, Mayor Domingo Vargas, for setting up and making arrangements for committee meetings to be broadcast and videotaped, because that's the only way that the citizenry is going to be able to get that information. Without that, we wouldn't have any information. At this time, I am going to talk about a forensic or procedural audit now. Blue Island taxpayers are exhausted by taxation, wasteful spending, multitude of excuses, lack of a counter offer to capture funds from quorum prior to the hospital board ruling, in addition to payments to numerous connected contracts, including payments to a firm with an open Attorney General complaint. We are still waiting for the Attorney General's office ruling. We see Blue Island aldermen taking orders, using their vote as their personal vote, ignoring and neglecting the wards, and simply not representing constituents in their respective wards. We hear and see huge chunks of information omitted from multiple committee reports that are read into the Blue Island City Council record. Those records are very important, and it's important that they be accurate. So leaving out chunks of information, I'm not even certain that that's legal. A crackdown and an investigation that digs deep into Blue Island's municipal finances appears increasingly necessary. Borrowing from different funds has hit a $30 million and climbing all-time high. As millions have not been properly accounted for, as evidenced by electronic checks that are not recorded or reported to the Finance Committee, minimally resulting in Finance Committee reports being incomplete and Finance Committee reports that are inaccurate and erroneous. No one knows the current bottom line. The Finance Department does not know what is currently in the treasury. Dave Meyer, CPA with Warmer and Rogers, Finance Department doesn't know. Carmen Bellato, City Treasurer, Randy Hoiser, City Clerk, along with the Finance Committee, do not know what is in the coffers. So who is really minding the store? FOIA requests were submitted on November 15th and November 23rd for all funds going into and coming out of the Water Fund, including payments to the city's Chicago for water. Where are the funds from the Chicago Fire filming and any other filming? Where's the paper trail and accounting for the Meadows? Where's the paper trail and accounting for monies generated and collected at the Rec Center? The Finance Department, City Council Treasurer, Blue Island City Clerk, and Finance Committee should be independently generating their own reports and comparing the figures. Carmen Bellato has repeatedly reported he gets his report from the Finance Department. The failure to generate independent reports reflects that there are no checks and balances. Therefore, accounting errors, human errors, data entry errors are not easily captured and corrected in a timely manner. This is simple and easy to understand. Together, they've all put the city of Blue Island in jeopardy. At the last Finance Committee meeting, it was noted by Alderman Fred Bellato that net pay was greater than gross pay. That's why it's important to put human eyes on these documents and get this stuff straight. Carmen Bellato should have an adding machine in his office. There should be a money counting machine in the Clerk's office. The CPA and the Finance Department, Treasurer, Clerk and Finance Chair should know what's in the treasury to the quarter of a cent, moment to moment. There should be a schedule for when funds are turned in from the Blue Island Police Department, the Meadows, the Recreation Center, and anywhere else where money is generated that comes to the city of Blue Island. The time for a forensic or procedural audit is now, starting with the Blue Island Water Fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Let me start with this. I want to congratulate the parade committee, all your volunteers, all that hard work, the fundraising throughout the year. That parade was phenomenal. Phenomenal. I've gotten compliments, and I'm forwarding to all of you who participated, from the aldermen, the elected officials, the residents, all the volunteers from outside of Blue Island. They've heard about it, some have tended it, and they said they're in awe. Again, kudos to you, congratulations to all of you. And every year, not saying that the first one was X level, but it's getting better and better and longer and longer, and more people are getting about it. Again, I want to congratulate all of you, on behalf of the city, on behalf of my office, job, not just job, extremely well done to all of you. It is the holiday season, and I heard what Mrs. DePaes Green has mentioned. In fact, she has mentioned it before, and I think a couple of years ago, and I know Alderman Johnson has brought this up about the forensic audit, and I think we've been explained, Mr. Kasparic has mentioned that normally a forensic audit has to be dedicated to one particular item or account or line item, et cetera. And to be honest with you, I would favor it, to put this to rest once and for all, whether it's the Water Fund, whatever item or account or needs to be checked in, I would have no objection to it. And again, the question is, it would have to be probably higher CPA or auditors who are not right now working for the city outside, and we would have to probably get a couple estimates or see who's out there to do it. But again, as Mayor of the city of Blue Island, I would welcome it, to finally put this to rest, the situation regarding the money in the city of Blue Island. Additionally, you have mentioned about people not knowing how much money exists on the accounts. As Mayor, and I was going to make this comment before the Finance Committee, is I think the residents of Blue Island need to know how much money has been paid to the vendors, how much money is owed to any vendors. I know there's talk about instead of appropriations, a budget, and again, I would favor that, as long as, again, it would keep everybody in line and know exactly how much money can be spent by each department, and I see no problem with that. And that's, I'll leave it at that. City Clerk, any business?
No business.
Any bids?
No bids.
City Treasurer, City Treasurer's not here. I guess we'll move on to the approval of interim fund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Casadis. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And I have Resolution Number 2019-043, a resolution authorizing city staff to conduct the sale of the property commonly known as 12751 Lincoln Street, Blue Island, Illinois, property index numbers 25-31, 202-020-0000, and 25-31-202-021-0000. This, again, is deja vu. We've already approved this several times, but there was a stop with the way the process of selling vacant land. I think the EPA has declared, along with verifying it's not a historical structure, and so now we're bringing it back to council again.
So you got a motion. Do we have a second, Alderman? Holly, any questions? Do you want to let the alderman know exactly where this property is located? I know it's on the addresses there, but approximate what's close to that area? Is it by the school?
I can't picture it myself. No, it's Lincoln Street. It's off 120th, by the old bowling alley, Anchor Bowl.
Okay. This way they...
I've never actually driven past it, but it's the address we place it one block south of Anchor Bowl.
Okay. We got a motion. We have a second.
Yes.
Alderman, we definitely have a second.
Yes, we do.
Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And I have Resolution Number 2019-043, a resolution authorizing city staff to conduct the sale of the property commonly known as 12751 Lincoln Street, Blue Island, Illinois, property index numbers 25-31, 202-020-0000, and 25-31-202-021-0000. This, again, is deja vu. We've already approved this several times, but there was a stop with the way the process of selling vacant land. I think the EPA has declared, along with verifying it's not a historical structure, and so now we're bringing it back to council again.
So you got a motion. Do we have a second, Alderman? Holly, any questions? Do you want to let the alderman know exactly where this property is located? I know it's on the addresses there, but approximate what's close to that area? Is it by the school?
I can't picture it myself. No, it's Lincoln Street. It's off 120th, by the old bowling alley, Anchor Bowl.
Okay. This way they...
I've never actually driven past it, but it's the address we place it one block south of Anchor Bowl.
Okay. We got a motion. We have a second.
Yes.
Alderman, we definitely have a second.
Yes, we do.
Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And lastly, I have motion for approval of payroll for November 29th, 2019, for $328,094.43. Thank you.
You got a motion. Do we have a second? By Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman?
That's it for community development.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Under Finance, our next meeting is Monday at 6:00 PM. We have two motions on the agenda. It's just payroll and accounts payable, so a motion for approval of accounts payable for December 11th, 2019, for $141,019.24.
You got a motion. Do we have a second? By Alderman Klinker. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kentello Zelman.
Aye.
Kentello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
By Alderman Clinker, any questions?
Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadas. Casadas, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Yeah, I know.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hill.
Aye.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack.
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
And lastly, I have motion for approval of payroll for November 29th, 2019, for $328,094.43.
Got a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Carr, any questions? Roll call, please.
Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadas. Casadas, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack.
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Nine ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Nothing?
That's it, under finance.
Thank you.
We meet Monday at 6 o'clock, be our last one for the year.
Thank you very much. Public health and safety committee?
Okay, I have that report. So we were supposed to meet on November 19th. We ended up canceling that meeting for lack of a quorum. Chief Arzab had a bunch of stuff that she wanted addressed in a timely manner, so we rescheduled it and posted and everything, so we actually met on November 25th, 2019, here at the East Anx. It was called to order at 6:02. Roll call, present were Alderman Carr, Casadas, Fernwald, Hill, Johnson, Clinker, Chief Arzab, Sergeant Sepesi and Chief Rita. Absent was Alderman Slattery and Don Marchbanks. There was no public comment. Under fire department business, Chief Rita gave an overview of the October and November fire department reports. This included the number of calls, fees and fines collected, monthly medical reimbursement breakdown, overtime, 7G payroll amounts for the months of September and October. There was a typo regarding medical reimbursements collected. Chief Rita's going to look into that and give the committee an update. He's since emailed us that update. He also spoke of public education and training that was completed, including the active shooter drill at Eisenhower. Chief noted an increase in maintenance costs, which included some flat tires, brake repairs, broken windshield in one of the ambulances, and suggested this could possibly be related to longer travel distances due to the closure of Metro South. Truck 2124 is still out of service, but he assured us it would be back in time for the light parade. The Chicago Fire Department donated 72 smoke detectors to the Blue Island Fire Department for us to give out. They were donated by a former Blue Island firefighter who now works for the city of Chicago Fire Department. Fire provincial work is back up and running since the computers back up and running. The department is currently short one man and is in the process of hiring an applicant. Is that him tonight, chief? Okay, that was him. Alderman Johnson asked about volunteer opportunities within the fire department. Chief Rita stated he would like to start a cadet program sometime in the future, but there was nothing currently set up. Chief Rita mentioned that Don Marchbanks and the Baima guys are always looking for help. There was a discussion about the donated smoke detectors. It was decided that Chief Rita would work up a proposal about their availability. The program would be advertised on the Waterbill's website and Facebook page. So there's 72? Yeah, so we're going to get something going on that and start handing out smoke detectors through the alderman, through the wards. Alderman Johnson brought up a program from a company called Retrofit USA that would install solar panels on the firehouse and the police station. Alderman Johnson's going to give them my information so that we can get a representative at a future meeting to provide us with more details. Chief Rita spoke of vehicle replacement program. He advised that due to the age of the various fire rigs and ambulances, we need to have a capital improvement plan, program in place. He stated he didn't think that we've ever had a capital improvement plan in the past. These emergency vehicles are very expensive. He also stated there's more wear and tear on the ambulances now. He's actively looking for grants. He also thinks we need to look at building replacement in the future as well. The condition and age of the equipment will have an effect on the fire department's ability to do their job. Alderman Fernwald inquired about the possibility of hiring a consultant to help due to the amount of money that will be needed to replace the vehicles. Alderman Johnson requested that the city hire a grant writer to help the various departments obtain grants. He suggested that this person be paid a percentage of whatever grant they obtained. The committee agreed and recommends that we hire an in-house grant writer that would, hang on a second, sorry, my phone's here messed up, would be paid on commission. The chief gave an overview of resolution 2019-037, a resolution, I'm sorry, a resolution and update of the Cook County jurisdictional hazardous mitigation plan. Chief Rita advised this is simply an update of a plan that we are currently involved with. It would allow the city to obtain funds from the county in the event of things like flooding, tornadoes, et cetera. A motion was made by Alderman Johnson and seconded by Alderman Carr to approve a resolution 2019-037 and send it to the full council for approval. We actually voted that in last council meeting. A voice vote was held, all in favor, motion carried. Under police department business, Alderman Fernwald gave an update on the speeding task force meeting that was recently held. They've had numerous ideas and suggestions. They decided this is a citywide issue and suggested that the task force hold an informational town hall meeting sometime in January, early February, so that any residents, so that any interested residents can voice their suggestions. Alderman Fernwald will take the lead in developing this agenda for the meeting and setting up the date. Excuse me. Chief Arzab gave an overview of the October and November police department reports. They included staff reports, incident reports, training and cases of interest. The Popeyes and Thornton robbers have been captured and charged. Chief gave a report of the active shooter drill at Dwight D. Eisenhower. She stated it went well on all aspects. She reported there's a brand-new video system in the police station due to the catastrophic failure of the old system during the computer system failure. Two probationary officers have completed their shadow shifts and are now on solo patrol. Two officers graduated the academy and are now starting their field training. One additional officer is set to graduate the academy the week before Christmas. Alderman Carr asked if there is a limit for injured officers that are off work before they're off on a permanent disability, specifically Officer Chicorillo, who's been off since May of 2018. Chief Arzab stated he is still being treated and his condition is improving. He is off on workers' compensation currently. Chief Arzab also reported the KEFOP system was compromised as well due to the ransomware and will need replacement very soon. Chief gave a report about Project Green regarding upgrading lighting in the police department at a low cost similar to what was done at the golf course. A motion was made by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Fernwald, to approve the Project Green proposal and send it to the finance committee for the review and approval. Voice vote was held, all in favor, motion carried. Sergeant Sepesi presented numerous items to the police department we'd like to incorporate as soon as possible. They included, one, frontline toolkit. This will provide citizens with the ability to register for overnight parking, vacation watch, directed patrol, pet registration, bike registration and numerous other items. The cost is $1,000 annually. A motion was made by Alderman Casadas, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to approve this agreement and send it to the finance committee for their review and approval. Voice vote was held, all in favor, motion carried. And number two, training tracker, and number three, these go-together pace scheduler. These programs would allow the department to track training, including mandatory training within the police department. It also will schedule the officers and make allowances for vacations, sick time schooling, et cetera. The annual cost would be slightly higher the first year due to setup charges, but in the future it would be less than what we are currently paying for our current scheduling program alone. A motion was made by Alderman Casadas, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to approve both of these items and send them to finance committee for the review and approval. Voice vote was held, all in favor, motion carried. Catch my breath here. Number four, police radios. Chief Arzab reported that current radios are no longer serviceable. She has worked with Marty Bennett at Cook County to get 21 radios for us at no cost. She would like to purchase nine additional radios at a cost of $46,980.56. Alderman Carr asked if drug forfeiture money could be used to make the purchase. Chief Arzab thought we had to use budgeted money for this. Alderman Carr asked the chief to look into the possibility of using drug forfeiture funds to pay for these radios. Alderman Carr is concerned that we don't have the money in the budget since we haven't gotten any reports from the finance director for over 10 months. A motion was made by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Carr to tentatively approve this item after checking with the legal department to see if drug forfeiture money can be used and send it to the finance committee for their review and approval. A voice vote was held, motion carried, all in favor. Propertyroom.com, this service would help the police department remove abandoned, excess or turned-in property by auction. Sergeant Sepesi explained the process. This was informational only at this time. The PD will be looking to place this on a future agenda for approval. Alderman Johnson suggested finding an organization outside of town to donate the numerous bikes that we currently have in our possession. Chief Arzab reported that she is planning to use drug forfeiture money to replace four cars in the detective division. She is also hoping to purchase four fleet cars using a loan that would pay off one car per year, but allow us to take delivery of all four cars now. This would help lower maintenance costs as they will have warranties. Her plan is to do this every four years in the future. The older cars can then be passed on to other departments within the city as the newer ones replace the older ones. There was no report from Baima because no one was present. Alderman Clinker reported that the committee had to schedule a grievance hearing regarding the police clerks. He will contact all parties and get the dates ASAP. Alderman Hill asked about emergency evacuation plans for city buildings. Chief Rita explained that there are plans that Mark Miller has all of them. A motion was made by Alderman Hill and seconded by Alderman Carr to adjourn the meeting at 7:40, all in favor, motion carried. Next meeting, next Tuesday, December 17th, 6:00 PM here in the East Anx. And we now have three grievances that we need to schedule a hearing for. I've been in contact with both Attorney Burke and Horvath and the representative from AFME, they're willing to go past the, there's a timeframe, but due to scheduling and stuff, so we're going to get that set up as soon as we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. Municipal services?
Yes, your honor, I have no report. We met tonight. I've got two ordinances. I'd like to make a motion together for ordinance number 2019-057 and ordinance number 2019-058. Ordinances restricting portions of certain streets for handicap parking only at or near 12043 Greenwood Avenue and 12558 Elm Street within the city of Blue Island, county of Cook and state of Illinois, and providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Got a motion, do we have a second, Alderman Fernwald? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadas.
Aye.
Casadas, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack.
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be January the 14th at 6 o'clock here in the East Anx.
Thank you. Judiciary committee, any comments? Nothing? Any aldermanic announcements or comments? Go ahead, Alderman.
A couple of comments. Number one, Angel's Touch, if anybody's got any cereal, I'm collecting on behalf of Alderman Rita for tonight. If anybody's got anything, I'll take and I'll bring it over to her house. And we'll probably still be collecting it at next week's city council, too. So if you haven't had a chance to grab any cereal boxes, I'll bring them for next month's meeting also. Another thing also, I want to reiterate, I'm going to leave it